Rice, place allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go public. Council President Sturz.
Here.
Councilor Cole.
Here.
Councilor Shamp.
Here.
Councilor Chamberlain.
Present.
Councilor Sturz.
Here.
Councilor Frye.
Here.
All members are present. We have a form.
Prove us out. Prior meetings minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Cole. Councilor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Council President Sturz.
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain.
Yes again.
I mean, Councilor Shamp.
That's right, man.
Councilor Sturz.
Yep.
And Councilor Frye.
Yep.
The change, your own name.
And, um, we have added here on the agenda, um, only because he has a smaller bladder than our officer, we have, um, our newest addition to the fire station here. We have our firefighter mascot, Chief.
That's the, uh, that's our new, uh, fire station mascot, Blaze. He's a golden doo and he's about 13 months old now. And, uh, he's gonna be used for our educational programs. We'll go to schools in different, uh, functions. And, uh, he's gonna get about 35, 45 pounds in there. He's a mid-size golden doo. He came from Reed's second count, uh, by Pettisville, Monday around two. Uh, he was gonna, Mr. Reed's are gonna be here today to explain a little bit about dogs, but he's got another dog, having, uh, puppies this afternoon, so he has to be at home. So, uh, he donated the dog to us and, uh, we're in the process to get him trained and, uh, we all want to thank you for that.
Yeah, that's very kind of him. And how long have we had?
He's been here about two weeks now. Well, just since his last council meeting was the first day.
When does he go to training?
Uh, as soon as we get him potty trained and everything around here, it's good.
Does everybody get to see him? Anybody want?
No, not until he's potty trained.
But he's been three, six months in training. He's feeling pretty good.
He feels great, I think.
So you'll see more of him at our, uh, Safety City and our educational programs, the schools and that.
Did you guys get to see him out there? Did you?
No.
Fireman's Association is taking responsibility for it.
Future expenses.
And he'll be up here?
Yeah, he lives here.
Have you signed him on contract yet?
We gave one around.
He wants a union.
He does pretty good. Alright. Alright. He's not, he doesn't like your camera.
No biscuits.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. And Chief Torbitt.
Okay, Tony, now that you've gone upstage by the dog. Well, look, it's, the jury's still out on that.
Not cute friendly like he is.
Not even that fuzzy. Alright. Today I have the honor and privilege to, uh, give Officer Tony Ember the 2015 Officer of the Year Award. It was recommended by the awards committee that Officer Ember be given this award. Officer Ember is a tremendous asset to the department in the short tenure with the agency, is committed to helping the citizens of Waseon, his fellow officers, and making our community a safer place to live. It is with great pleasure that I bestow this much-earned award on Officer. I don't wanna hear, I don't wanna hear it if you don't get the picture.
What's your award up above, Kelly?
There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you.
That's quite an honor. How many ways would you go?
Only two.
Coming to you. That's great. Okay. Alright. Okay. Um, let's see, before we would, uh, begin to go into our public hearing, I'd like to give, um, Mr. and Mrs. Reed's second opportunity to come up and, and speak. Do you wanna say something before we go in?
We had a form to fill out to, to preserve our farmland and we didn't understand what it was about, but Mr. McWaters explained it to us, so we'd like to withdraw our, uh, application for the farm and ask if you had done any, uh, anything to promote the property out there for sale. In business, for business.
Okay. Okay. So you're asking what we have done as a city to promote?
Right.
As economical ways that we've gone forward, I mean...
Well, our, uh, our county economic development director is aware of that property and, and everything, along with One Wood Corridor, but it's, uh, Zone B4, which is a pretty wide open, um, for zoning and we'd really like to have stuff developed there.
And I think when the folks make inquiry to the city, apparently to the various department heads, uh, interact with the folks and answer zoning questions, building questions, uh, whatever, uh, the city can do to help further that process, fair, fair to say.
Very fair. We've got a significant investment out there.
I mean, what was first done, when that first stock left there actually was ads placed in newspapers in more national, you know, bigger areas. So, we've been marketing here ever since we put the street in, so. But, you know, market is starting to come back for us here, so, well, hopefully we've, and we've talked to a lot of businesses and directed them up that way.
Just by way of a follow-up, perhaps, I think the auditor's office will be asking the city for its, uh, we have to fill out a part of that form in return. If you guys could maybe just communicate with the auditor's offices as well and let them know that you had decided to withdraw the application, then we'll do the same and make sure we have that covered. And thank you for your understanding. Appreciate it. Time to chat with you about it.
So we're gonna be moving on to item number eight on our agenda then. We have, um, Mommy Valley Planning Organization Dennis Miller from the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. She'll have to speak with us a little bit.
Hi. Well, the, uh, state of Ohio has a program called the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, which is commonly referred to as a chip program. Obviously, they always have to have an after, but the, uh, we've been doing this program, uh, in our five-county area that we serve since about 1995. We've been, uh, been, uh, undertaking programs. And we used to have about eight grantees we worked with. Uh, we had the, uh, all of our counties, the city of the Paulian, and the city of the Polians that we, uh, we represented. And your, your, uh, city of Waseon was covered under the Fulton County program because at the time the state put a, uh, size limit on the communities and you weren't eligible, uh, to receive grants directly. You had to go through the county. And, uh, so we, we've all, we've been serving and have done, uh, quite a few units. I, we had a map that, uh, at one point that I think we had close to 20 units or, that we had done since 2009. Um, and our, what we, when I say units, uh, they, uh, we, what we do is we provide, uh, direct assistance to homeowners or landlords, uh, that own rental properties to upgrade their properties, uh, to deal with issues of, uh, you know, bad roof, furnace, electrical problems. We go in, we provide assistance to upgrade the unit and, uh, then we file a, uh, a declining mortgage on that property that disappears over a five-year period. So that, uh, we, we just, it prevents people from profiting on our investment. We allow them to, uh, we make the improvement and then eventually go off and, uh, off of their liability and, uh, so, uh, we've been, as I said, serving you through Fulton County. The state, uh, this year revised their standards, um, in terms of the size of communities and you, you are now eligible, an eligible community and could receive up to $300,000. Now, something we did a couple of years ago to sort of improve our competitiveness, uh, 'cause it is a competitively funded program around the state, um, but you don't fund everybody, of course. So we, we always look to try to improve our chances of getting funding. And, uh, two years ago, they implemented a strategy to reduce the number of grantees by allowing, uh, communities to form partnerships among the communities in the area. And what we did at that time was we went with Fulton County, Hickory County, and the city of Paulian as one partnership area. And, uh, it allowed us to score much higher than we normally scored. And, uh, this would, if you had joined the partnership, that partnership, it would increase your allocation from 300,000 to 350,000. They're offering a $50,000 extra amount because they want to see people go into the partnerships. Uh, if you think about it logically, around the state, this for our particular, uh, area, we reduced the number of grantees from eight down to three. So it makes it much easier for them, they, when they come and monitor, uh, the amount of grant agreements, the amount of administrative work they have to do. It's just a lot simpler for them. And we, uh, we've been pretty successful at spreading the, the units out to make sure there's a fair distribution, um, in the, in the area. And we've worked with Tom to, these identified units that we've, uh, we've actually tried to go in and help them and, uh, been pretty successful, I think. So, so I guess why we're here tonight is just to help and explain that to you. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them, but I think what we'd like to do is, uh, I guess have you consider whether you want to join that partnership of Fulton County, uh, Hickory County, city of Paulian, and then the city of Waseon and join that. And, uh, we, yeah, is that the right?
Any questions in common?
Dennis, if the city decided to do that, what would be the, would we need a motion, resolution?
Yeah, there'd be a resolution. And I think I provided one to the mayor. We just have that, uh, resolution. Then we would, we would take your, your resolution to serve at your request to become a member of the partnership. We would get the concurrence of Hickory County, Fulton County, and Napoleon to accept you as a, a member into the partnership and, and then, so there'll be a partnership agreement that would be signed at a later date, um, among all the four parties.
And what did you say the length of that partnership?
It, it is, uh, it's, uh, ongoing. Uh, you can withdraw at any time, but it's, uh, immediately, uh, these grants are for a two-year cycle. So once we would, if you had entered into the partnership agreement, you'd be committed for two years. And then at, at later dates, you could, you could always withdraw if you so choose.
Dennis, there's no cost to us.
No, there's no cost.
The administrative fees are all paid through the grants, but there's no cost to the city to participate.
Yeah, my staff does all the work. I've got, uh, two housing inspectors that work with Tom and, and then I've got a, an intake person that qualifies the people for the assistance. And, uh, we do the, we probably process the financial aspect of it through Hickory County because they're a lead county. So there wouldn't be an administrative burden on the city at all. What we would ask you to do is, uh, is to help promote the program so we can get, uh, the assistance we're expecting most needed.
How do you promote the program at this point in time?
Uh, through the newspaper and, uh, through networking with other agencies like ours that identify, you know, clients that need help.
And we have applications up here too that we give out. And we, you know, when we find things, people that would qualify, I give them the contact number. There's two or three of them going on right now that came about that way, so.
Yeah, we've promoted it on the city's website and the county website and we have the flyer up in our office also.
And we reach out to military groups and, you know, it's a pretty broad network of people that help people, you know. So we always reach out to other agencies and, and try to, uh, actually, Northwest Ohio Community Action, they do some weatherization work where they, they insulate homes and that type of thing. We try to piggyback our assistance on what they're, so we can do a, a more complete renovation of the home.
So this is something we could probably link to by one page too, then?
There already is, I believe.
Is it?
Yeah, we have it on our page already.
Information for the church.
The information. And once we would participate in, that would be something that we could do.
We could get the applicant, we could get the forms.
Yeah, we could leave, we could do a link to our website. All the forms, the application forms and everything are on our website.
That would, that would be the best, probably, because there's only a right to them. They're maintained and everything and when we send them back, it goes direct.
Sure. I mean, something either council could consider as a committee first, but the recommendation.
I think so. And then bring it back, just the resolution.
Sure.
Alright.
You want to come back first?
Yeah. I think so. I think that would probably be best. And that way we can have the council all discuss with us a whole, and then bring us back to the resolution you're at when you decide. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to committee reports. David? Oh, no. I'm sorry. I need to edit it quick. No committee reports. Thank goodness. David.
We did, we did meet with the Downtown Revitalization Committee.
Wait a minute. We did have a committee. We did have one at 4:30. Sorry, David. I do this every time I see committee reports and I look at you every single day. I'm sorry. We have a 4:30, uh, committee meeting that's not on the agenda. Are we gonna have a report on that?
Uh, we'll, we'll reserve our reports on council meeting. We'll hear back from Dennis with some follow-up work, so we'll have a more complete report later on.
Great. Alright, thank you. Alright. Now, David.
Well, we did meet our Downtown Revitalization Committee last week. Uh, so those, uh, committee members, we kinda discussed an overview of the Downtown Revitalization Grant. Um, threw out some ideas about how we can promote somebody outreach to the program. Um, since Dennis is here, I'll probably reach out to Mommy Valley Planning Organization and possibly get Nikki to a committee meeting. If she has the time to do that, I'll be reaching out to her. Defiance or Mommy Valley Planning has done a Downtown Revitalization for Defiance and other, other, uh, local governments in the area. So they'd be a good resource to help with, uh, some of those hurdles that I'm, I'm trying to get over promoting the program. Um, did have a new applicant stop by the office and submit an application for 136 South Fulton Street. So I do have a new application that I'll be working through. Working with another, uh, business owner, building owner downtown also. Went and met with them last Friday and I think there's a, there's a, uh, property acquisition match, hinge, I think, that we can help people get matches through property acquisition. Uh, so I'll be talking with the county commissioners, uh, with, uh, with that topic. Um, then we have the ADA Engineering Services Agreement that we sent out to Peterman and Associates. So as soon as we get that back signed, I think we'll be meeting with them so they can come out and do their work to get that ADA, uh, grant project underway and get that out of the vision in the next few months or four years. Um, and then I'd like to schedule another committee meeting, uh, with our Downtown Revitalization Committee to discuss the, the benches and trash receptacles and, uh, figuring out which ones we would purchase and how we, uh, move about with placement of those and removing some of the stuff that's downtown, uh, currently. Um, I think that's pretty much it. It's been a lot of, uh, kinda refiguring the Downtown Revitalization Grant and get it promoted so we can get some of that activity going early this year. I feel confident.
Fire Department, uh, county's, our phone, county fireman's office coming up the 16th and, uh, the council's been invited to that. We will be presenting a, what's called a Smoke Dog Award at that time to the O'Neill family. We had a fire at their house back in Thanksgiving weekend. And they were able to escape the house and get them under the fire because they had properly installed smoke detectors. So the state fire marshal will be at that meeting, uh, to present the family with the State of Ohio Smoke Dog Award for having, working and operating those smoke detectors. Good PR done. Please be attentive, so we know after the meeting. Other than that, nothing more to fire department, less anything to what.
Chief Torbitt.
Just a couple of things for tonight. I'm working on the end of the year report, so I'm trying to finish that up for the middle. Also wanted to give you a heads up on gov deals. We sold 37 items last year for a total of $17,514.95. Since the program inception in 2007, we've sold 311 items on the program for a total of 100, over $154,000 brought into the city. And I can guarantee you that that's probably five times what we would've got from my Smoke Dog. Yeah, a lot of it is, well, no, it's usually the public work. A few police cars that have turned into New York City cats. And also a fun fact for you, if anybody has seen the new Norfolk and Southern catalog or calendar, we are, February, the Waseon Dico is the February, uh, picture of the Norfolk and Southern cal- calendar.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, tomorrow night, the Pride Preservation Committee will meet at 5:00 to, uh, review an application for a new sign and, uh, fence at the old Sterling Restaurant. It's a barbecue place, uh, Shannon Barbecue, I believe is what it says. So we'll be doing that. But I also was in contact today with, uh, Norda, Northwest Ohio Rail Trails, and they informed me that right now the Metro Parks are currently trying to get $3 million grant to pave from the Fulton-Lucas line to Road 11. So they're trying to do something pretty big. So if they get it paved that far, then maybe we could, because we start at 11 and come through to 21. So if, if the Metro Parks is willing to be a partner for that half of the county, maybe we can talk to them about doing something big too, so. That would be sort of exciting to get there. You want to get that paved that far through. Because the section we have paved right now, I mean, Tom knows, that there's a lot of people that use that and the more we can. Of course, it would take some big money to get around the live track that we have to cross, so that's, that would be a good thing to do. But other than that, we, we have about five active house constructions going on right now. Actually, starting out pretty good.
People are starting to build again. That's great. Okay. Dennis?
Uh, last Monday, we opened up the bids to repaint the clarifier, uh, the water treatment plant. Those bids are being evaluated and we should hopefully have a recommendation very soon to, to award that. There were three bidders. Um, one was significantly lower than the other two. And if that proves out, then that, that'll be a clear path for us. Wind Putt Street Project, the sanitary sewer main is done, the storm sewer main is done, and they are going like gangbusters, putting in the water main. Uh, the sanitary sewer main has passed its deflection and, uh, pressure testing. So when they get done with the water main, it will, they'll next go back and start putting in the laterals from the main to the houses and businesses. Um, after that, they'll probably do the water and then the storm because that's progression from deepest to shallow. Um, anyway, that's, that's, that's going very well. And if, uh, not going with the weather, it keeps cooperating.
Very fortunate.
Keeps cooperating. Uh, by the time warm weather gets here, they'll be ready to, uh, work with cement and creating the roadbed and paving. So I think they'll get in and out of here in good shape this spring. Other than that, um, I did attend the Fulton County Economic Development Committee's Community Outreach Me- Outreach Meeting for, uh, Waseon, the Waseon area, which also included Waseon School District, Pettisville School officials, Fulton Township, and Dover, I believe. Um, very poorly attended. Must've been a, a night when everybody else had something to do, but it was, it was a very good meeting and we got some good information, some demographics, and, um, went through an exercise of identifying our communities locally, our community's strengths and weaknesses and, and opportunities. So it was good, also attendance. It's also good for, uh, Mount Yalroy, the, the director, to have that dialogue and that input and help some marketists. Hopefully there'll be another opportunity to do that when more people can attend.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jamie?
I was in contact with our municipal advisor regarding the school vet and we have sent out letters of the various banks, um, for the bidding process, which will end on Friday at noon. So we will have, you know, I'm sorry, I have to write that out the next meeting. I also have completed at the month end, but did not have the opportunity to print out the results for you. So I would hope to, um, I thought that's.
Okay, Tom?
Well, working a number of projects, including a few for the cemetery, board trustees, and Scott, in capacity superintendent. Um, also, um, I have, in my attempt to follow up on the outstanding debt and revolving loan fund from Sterlina.
loan fund from Sterlina, have an offer of settlement from one of the three, um, guarantors and so I guess I'll be eager to talk to David about getting a RLF meeting set up to discuss that with them and see what they wanna, uh, do, but we're, um, we'd already received one, um, from the, the El Nogal estate, received about a third of the amount that was out and working with the other two, uh, folks and so one of them has stepped up and agreed to make certain payments, so we'll get that in front of the committee and then ultimately before council for its consideration, if that's something that's appropriate. I guess that's about it.
All righty. Let's move on to first reading of legislation. Ordinance 2016 dash four, amending section 147.08 of the codified ordinance of the city of Waseon.
First reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Consular Shamp and second by Consular Coles. Is there any discussion? Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Coles?
Yes.
Council President Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, ordinance 2016 dash four passes on first reading.
We have nothing under the second reading and nothing under third reading. Do we have anything under new business? We have a motion for cleanup bills.
Move. I'm welcome.
Motion moved by Council President Sturts and second by Consular Shamp. Council President Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Coles?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, motion carries.
And motion for adjournment, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion moved by Consular Chamberlain and second by Consular Frye. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.